It may be that someone named Debbie, it may be her.
Yeah, that's probably Debbie. Hmm? That's not her? Debbie?
Yeah, right now.
Yes, that's me.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Okay.
Hi, Ms. Bifus, thank you so much for joining us.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for having me. Um, as Mr. Jackson said, the, you know, COVID put us in a bind for a little while. We lost about four months. Um, before that, you know, the, the program was doing very well. Um, we are back into it again. Unfortunately, before we were doing four days a month, and now we're down to two, um, because, you know, the truck is only out a few days, um, and we're only in front of the shelter in Newark. We're not going into any of the towns. Um, because we obviously don't want a crowd to form. So we're keeping it here, um, and the, the trappers are coming to us, which has been working out fine. Um, one of the big problems, though, is the trapping. We have a lot of people that are willing to help, but they either don't know how to trap, or they just don't have the means to trap. Um, so I'm trying to hook up people that are experienced trappers with these, you know, other people who are interested in helping with the feral cats. So that's been, been going along okay. Um, I don't know, did you have any questions?
How many, um, cats have you guys actually served, serviced to date? And where, um, are there any municipalities that you haven't been able to service?
Well, we have been servicing, Belleville has always been very active. Um, also, Irvington has stepped up. Um, we've been doing, oh, trying to think what other municipalities, um.
I, I actually have the list, Deborah, in front of you if you want. Um, we have Verona, Verona, Bloomfield, Irvington, Verona, Bloomfield, Belleville, Newark, uh, East Orange, Roseland, uh, Orange, I mentioned, East, uh, East Orange before, Nutley, uh, those are the towns I see on our list.
So it sounds like we have a good cross-sector so far. It sounds like at least maybe probably about two-thirds of our municipalities have been participating in this program. Just, um, listening to the list. Um, where is the shelter located in Newark that your, that the van is, is parked in front of?
It's 124 Evergreen Avenue in Newark, right off Frelingheisen Avenue. It's right in front of the shelter.
And the two days a week, are those, um, structured days or do they change on a monthly basis?
Um, they change as, as the, um, you know, the groups, we try to fit it into where they are trapping, certain times that they're trapping. So, you know, we go with them. Usually Bloomfield is like the end of the month, the last Monday of the month, and, uh, Belleville is sort of in the beginning. So that's how we were doing it. Um, now, you know, we're just, whenever we can do what we do it. And we also have feral cats coming on our regular surgery days. If someone has a feral cat, and it's hard to trap them, so once they get them, I try to fit them in on any given surgery day. So they're at least getting done.
So is this information posted on your website so that, um, folks know the days that they should actively try to capture these cats and bring them down to you? Like, how do people know?
Yes, we had it on the website. I think a lot of it too is simply word of mouth with the, um, trapping community. I mean, everybody sort of knows one another, and, um, it's, there's some communities, obviously, that we haven't been able to, to bring in. Um, we sent letters out, you know, letting all municipalities know about this program. Last. So, um, we get more information now and, and try to get more people on board.
I, I think that certainly would help, because I know, um, probably about a month ago, I was talking to someone who was from either Irvington or East Orange, and they wasn't real sure if your program was up and, and going, um, yet. So I directed them to try to, to contact you directly. So I think sending out a letter would be helpful, and if you can, we can come up with more structured days. Mr. Jackson, when was the funding that we allocated, um, scheduled to end? Like, was there a term, a time period that we gave with it?
Uh, we put, uh, twenty-five thousand in for this year, uh, Madam Chair, and, um, to date, we have spent, um, uh, we have sixty, sixty-three hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, that we, um, spent on one hundred and twenty-four, uh, procedures. Um, and obviously, that number would, would be much higher had it not been for the, uh, the COVID impact. But, uh, so far, and again, that money, I, I would anticipate that we would put money in the budget for twenty-twenty-one. Um, and may be able to even carry this money over, uh, for that purpose as well. But, um, from, from, you know, from the very limited time that we've had to work on this, it's, it's, um, as Ms. Bifus said, I think it's been pretty, you know, pretty good. We actually have a number of, obviously, more, but, um, we did have done one hundred and twenty-four procedures around the county. We, I think, we have the capacity to do a lot more. Um, God willing, this, um, this pandemic will, you know, will figure out something and be able to do more, much, many more procedures, because we have the money there. Um, and we also, we have the will and we have the money, so we should be able to, you know, we should get it done.
Ms. Bifus, I have a question. Um, uh, during your presentation, you talked about one of the challenges since, um, we've kind of been spun around here with, with, with the way life is right now. You said that people are struggling to capture some of the cats because they're not real, um, they need some assistance with trapping. What does trapping involve?
Um, well, you can, you put a trap out, um, you bait it, and you have to, you know, capture the animal within a certain time period. The trapping's done at night. If they're not in the trap by the morning, the, you know, the trap is released, because we don't want these animals in traps for any length of time. So there's, it's, the trappers know what they're doing, um, and they have a certain criteria. Most people don't, are not successful at it. So, you know, this is why we need the experienced people.
Deborah, can you describe, uh, for the board, like, what, what, what does the trap look like? What is it? You know, how does it function? What do you put in it to get the cat, more, a little bit more detail on that?
Okay, we try to, it's a wire trap. We try to put as little food as possible into the trap. It's a spring set, so when they go into the trap for the food, it's gonna, they're going to, um, knock that spring and close the trap.
So let me ask a question. Is, do you think that, um, in the climate that we're in right now, that the funding that we have set aside, um, is it, could we be more effective just leaving it, the funding in place the way that we have just to do the surgeries? Or do you think we should, is there a way for us to augment a, a small portion of it to, to direct the trapping parts? What are your thoughts?
I think the trap, I think helping with the trapping would be a good idea. I think that would be a great idea.
From which perspective? Like, what do you foresee? Like, what could the board do? Is it that we purchase, um, the traps itself, or we host like a training to teach more people how to do the trapping?
Both. I think, you know, there are people that need traps, um, and there's also a great need to learn how to do this. Um, I do know people that are so good at it. I mean, you know, I could connect you with these people and maybe they could help with setting up some kind of training.
Let me ask you, but, Ma'am Chair, if I, if I could just jump in, I just want, how much is a trap? Like, what does a trap cost?
Um, you know what? I'm not really sure. I'm honestly not sure. Um, I know that when we rent out a trap, we try to cover the cost, so we take a deposit of sixty-five dollars, and this is for a cat trap, um, or for a small animal. So that's kind of to cover the cost. Um, we only charge four dollars and twenty-four cents a day, and that is, um, you know, people are giving that back, giving the, the rest of the money back. They only, um, we only charge for the number of days that they use it. Um, but that's, you know, we, we do give out traps here, but we, you know, we don't have that many traps either. You know, we, we're limited as well.
So Ms. Bifus, if you can, can you have someone reach out to, to me or to Mr. Jackson to kind of give us some information on how much, um, these potential traps would cost on an individual basis, and how much would a training cost? And, you know, if we could do a training virtually for people who would be interested, because we're looking, um, to get the best bang for our buck, right? And how we work in the climate that we're in right now to address this issue, this need, that the board and administration wants to jointly support.
Yes. I can check into that.
Yes. And then therefore Administrator Jackson could review it, and then he could come back to us with a recommendation on if he thinks that we should, you know, augment the funding that we've allocated, because we're, um, well below where we probably would have been if we were under normal circumstances. If that could at least, you know, help us, um, come at addressing our goal for another alternative.
Right.
I, I think, uh, Madam Chair, I think that's a great idea. Um, in fact, I would even, I would even suggest, uh, Deborah, if you could put together like a proposal to do, um, just kind of following up with, uh, with Freeholder Cooper said, um, if you could put together a proposal to do uh, training, uh, but also acquiring some traps, um, and present it like a holistic thing to us, and then we can review that with the committee, um, and, and, and go from there. Because I think that's what we, what we really need, um, based on what you're saying and, and, and response to the Freeholders' questions. I think that's kind of, and again, it doesn't sound like it, it, we can do very well within even the context of money we already have.
Oh, yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I think that's a, I think, uh, that's a great idea, Freeholder.
Okay, um, and so then, I think, then Administrator Jackson, we can review some more, um, uh, plans for twenty-twenty-one. If we want to move in your, the, the direction from your last suggestion about having a matching grant with the municipalities, I don't know with the climate that we're in, if that's something that we would want to roll out right now, or just hold the line on the way that we're doing it right now. So I think, um, the administration, Freeholder Board can have that discussion on, you know, how we want to do it for the next year. Freeholder Mercado, do you have any questions or concerns?
Yes, I just, just a couple of comments on, on the conversation, and then thank you, Madam Chair, for your leadership on this. Um, uh, as you were saying, um, the, the traps itself, I have a trap, you know, I, I went and purchased a trap because that's animals in my yard, and I wanted to, you know, to get, and, um, it took a while, one, to, to learn how to use the trap. Um, you got to know how to work the mechanics of, of those traps, and they come in different sizes, as, uh, the presenter stated. So I, I think, um, uh, it's a great idea that we invest some money in, um, purchasing some traps and, and then, uh, teaching folks how to use it. Um, I think the messaging of what we're doing is very important, so we can get a, a, uh, uh, a larger pool of, uh, of folks that are really concerned about, uh, um, about the cats in our communities. I live in the North Ward in Newark, and I know, uh, uh, there's a community organization that is very, very interested in, um, uh, in this particular initiative. If there's any way that we can get a, um, a flyer or something, um, uh, sent to my office so that I can share with um, that organization. They have folks, volunteers, that have been, you know, uh, trying to save cats in the North Ward community. That's just the North Ward. I'm sure there's, you know, the problem is a lot prevalent um, in all parts of the city, as well as, you know, throughout the county. So, um, any way that I can be helpful in, um, in moving this forward, I'm here to support, uh, you as well. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Freeholder Mercado. I think you just made a, a wonderful recommendation. Ms. Bifus, can you do that for us? Can you add, um, well, one, you have to follow up back with the proposal that Administrator Jackson just asked for about, around the training and the trapping, right? But can you put together for us a flyer, um, that communicates the, um, essential information around what we now van is parked outside of 124 Evergreen, um, and that, you know, people from throughout the county are welcome to bring in the feral cats, and that you guys will address it, so that we can start getting that information moving right now. And then once the administration and the Freeholder Board approve the training and the trapping, then we come back with another flyer, and then we can disseminate that to Freeholder Mercado and other stakeholders that would be interested in moving that information around the county for us.
Okay. I can do that.
All right. Um, Administrator Jackson, is there anything else that I've missed that we need to discuss?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, I think we're, I think we covered it pretty well. And I think we have a, I think we have a plan going forward.
Great. So, Madam Clerk, this time I'm going to move to the public comment session. And again, I want to reiterate the phone number that folks can dial in if they have any questions or comments that they want to make. The number is posted on the screen, but it's eight-five-five-seven-five-six-seven-five-two-zero, extension six-seven-five-six-nine. So, um, while we're doing that, I just want to thank Freeholder Mercado for joining us today, and for Administrator Jackson and his staff for joining us and working on this important topic that we have that's impacting some of our communities more than others within the county. So, um, are there any callers on, Lionel?
Yes, there are. There are two callers. Um, if you are calling in, uh, please press zero and you will be into queue. The first caller that we have, last four numbers of the telephone number is six-five-six-six. You are being queued in to speak at this time. Caller, you are, you are live.
Hello, um, this is Linda Natoli. Um, um, I'm interested in, um, uh, cats. Um, my basic question was on the administration of everything, and how, um, um, how everything, um, is managed, because I know a lot of, um, well, when we, when you were talking before about, um, who's going to trap the cats. Now, there are animal control people in every single town, and many of them earn over sixty thousand dollars, and a lot of them don't do a lot. They don't do any trapping. It, it really shouldn't be up to all the citizens to do the trapping. So I would think of them as another resource, because there's a lot of money being spent in the county for all of these, uh, animal control people. So that's one, that's one idea. And also, um, there has to be more communication, um, as far as the management and which cats are being done, because, um, we don't always know that it's Essex County cats that were being, um, taken in for, um, operations, because a lot of the nonprofits are in Union County. And, um, um, basically, um, I think all the ideas that were said were good so far about the, um, mobile unit and all that. That was a very good idea. And, um, it'd be nice to have more, um, um, communications to people that are, you know, interested in this, because, uh, um, I had mentioned it to the, uh, health, um, person in, uh, Irvington, and she had, she didn't, when this first started, I mentioned that to her. She hadn't heard of it. So that's, that's about all I wanted to say. And we need a lot more, um, um, after the cats are trapped, somebody has to feed them, so resources are needed also for that. Uh, that's about all I wanted to say.
And through here, Madam Chair.
I'd like to say.
Caller, please state your, your full name again, and your city, or your address, or any association, if you are related to an association, for the record.
Uh, my name is Linda Natoli. I'm not associated with any organization. Um, but I have trapped cats in the past, you know, just the ones that were outside my house. And I'm from Irvington.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your call. The next caller is calling from, uh, last four numbers is two-four-six-one. Again, anybody that's waiting to, uh, speak, please press zero on your phone, and you will be connected into our queue. Next caller, you are allowed to speak now.
Mama Mia, Mama Mia, Charlotte Gallow, Irvington. I listened to Debbie's little spiel about how Irvington has stepped up. I'd like to know who's doing Irvington. Also, I don't think there's very good communication. She gave the key point. They contact their friends, and their friends use the trap returning neuter. We cannot have that. We need some kind of system, and you're talking about buying traps and trapping, yet you won't invest in a trapper, a professional person. You're putting a non-person that does a trap that you teach. They could catch a raccoon, they could catch a possum, and guess what? They can even catch a rat. What are they going to do? These are, these are not people that are interested in trapping. They just want to trap their cat. Generally, when they have people that teach it, they have to have somebody there. You have seniors, you have people that are non-speaking English, you have people that are Haitian, Spanish, and, and, and Irvington. You would have to be able to explain it to them, and you would have to be going into the neighborhood. Forget the, uh, notifying people, we'll help you with the traps. You better be on the street like I am. I'm on the street twenty-four seven in Irvington. I haven't seen any cats being trapped in Irvington for a long time. She said Irvington has stepped up. Who are the trappers that are doing it? I asked the committee to have Amber become the professional trapper, so that we know accountability of where the cats are being done. You rather not invest in a person, you rather invest in traps and also workshops. Oh, we pay for workshops. Excuse me? Workshops should be free, and you don't, I, we had a workshop with a great Valerie Wilson. Okay? And our animal control, three people showed up. What do you think is going to be with the trapping? The only people that are going to be interested in the trapper is the one that has the cat, that they want them to be either, uh, that they're pregnant, or they don't want them there to be taken care of. Debbie is grazing over there. She's not being honest. We do not have the resources. What about the seniors that can't drive? What about people that aren't snapped, that don't drive, that take buses? The, the van, mobile van should be accessible to everybody in, uh, in Meads area. You said East Orange is being done. Who's doing it? Miss Pop? Is it Kathy Yates? Who is it? We need to know where these cats are being done and how many. Yeah, they're low for the quarantine, yet Eileen was paying for another, uh, to do my cats. She came in as a trapper. She's a professional trapper, one of the best. She came and did my cats in Irvington that were pregnant. Your association shut down. Debbie said, "Sorry, we're not doing any cats. Don't bother me. My, my boss said we're done." Cats will get pregnant. Cats are sick. There is nobody you can fool. There are no numbers that that humane society that is interested in the residents. You have a dead cat, they don't have nobody picking it up. I've been picking up dead cats for years, putting them in, bagging, tagging, and throwing away. Everybody, "Oh, isn't that cute? Isn't that nice?" Sent pictures. That's not fair. We pay people to do this. And then I called him and decided, John, oh, he's the best. He represents Saturday and Sunday. I called him. He said, "Don't bother me. Bag it, tag it yourself. It's the weekend. I don't come." So she's making a nice little presentation there. Buy some traps. Uh, what happens if a person gets hurt? Who's going to pay the insurance? The trap tends not wrong if you don't do it right. Who's going to pay the insurance? Are you covered by that? Oh, by the trap. There's no, traps are not easy, that's on. You have to know what you're doing. Like, she said, professional people should be doing this. It's like sending somebody to a store that has not really paid attention. And, you know, some people don't pay attention unless they do it themselves. They can do it there, and then they forget when they go home. You have to have people working together. We don't have that. Debbie's good at telling me. I croaked her how many times. I asked her for tap food. "Oh, I'm going to send you some. You're not entitled to it. It's only staff people. See you around." Never answered me again. So who do we need people like that? I'm upset. She's telling you all kinds of stories, and you're going, "Yeah, this sounds good. Yeah, we'll put money into that. Yeah, we'll put..." That's not the easy solution. Are you out on the street here? Are you feeding cats? Are you seeing what's going on in the neighborhoods? I see. Irvington has seen these cats that have to be done? No. Is she interested? No. She's giving a nice presentation. Nice, that sounds good. Yeah, we'll have workshops. Who's going to attend? What time? Where? Oh, yeah, sounds good. She hasn't done any communication once, not in any kind of flyer, not anything. And you're telling me, "Oh, this is great. This is a horrible meeting." Horrible. It's all baloney.
So, Ms., Ms. Gallow?
I'm upset, because I'm on the street with these cats, and I've been begging long enough for these community cats. I've been begging.
Ms. Gallow?
It's not fair to me.
Ms. Gallow, this is Freeholder Cooper. We thank you for your comments, um, and, and your participation. Um, she raises a good question that actually did pop in my mind during Ms. Bifus's presentation. Is, and I understand that we're in a climate where we want to be hesitant. But what about the people that are not mobile, that don't have cars, who can drive down to the humane society? How is the... How is the...
Before COVID hit, we were going out with the mobile. We were going out with it. But we haven't been able to during the pandemic, because we did not want to go into any area that would make a crowd form. It's very controlled when people come down. Here, you know, we're able to control it. That's why we haven't been going to the towns.
Well, let me ask a question. When you go out to some of these towns, when you said you don't want a crowd to form, like, so let's say if you took the van to Orange or to Irvington, how many people typically come out to the van? Are you talking about three or four?
Quite a few, because, you know, they're making appointments and they're coming, but anytime the van shows up, I mean, other people are going to come by. But I would like to address one, one issue. When we have people bringing cats, they have to sign a waiver where that cat came from, and that that cat will go back to that location. We don't just randomly pay cats, and we make sure that these are Essex County cats.
How do you make sure that Essex County cats, do people have to show like identification?
Yes, they have. They have to sign a very involved waiver, and I will send you a copy of that, so you can see what they do sign.
So that's how we get verification, that we are servicing Essex County residents and not residents from Union County?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They have to sign, put their name, their, their telephone number, exactly where they picked the cat up from, and find that they will release that cat exactly back to that area.
Hmm. Mr. Jackson, you, you, your thoughts?
Yeah, I do have some thoughts. Um, you know, I think we all appreciate Ms. Gallow's, uh, passion around this issue and her commitment to it. Um, uh, however, I, I do think that it's not, um, on a practical basis, I don't think it's realistic to say a trapper um, is going to be sufficient for the county of Essex. It's just, it's a, you know, it's a huge, uh, swath of land and, and, uh, there is some issues with local control. Um, we could, we could certainly take a look at having somebody supplement what's going on, but it's truly going to take and, and, uh, volunteers, and there is a, um, quite a, a community of volunteers who do the trapping. I think it has to be a combination of things. Um, you, you, you put one person on for, to be the quote-unquote professional trapper, uh, are we realistically thinking that there's going to be, um, you know, getting to enough numbers that we're looking for? I, I know in Montclair, there are, um, a, a number of folks who are, uh, you know, I don't know if they're professional, but they are expert, uh, trappers. I'm sure that there are others, you know, in and around the county. So I don't want, I, I think we have to do two things. I think we, I'd be happy to look at this notion of getting somebody, um, who's, uh, dedicated to it more, but also, um, understanding that there, it's going to have to be that plus, uh, uh, enhancing our volunteer network of trappers. Um, and yeah, you know, are we going to get fifty people to show up in a room to do it? Probably not, but if we can get, if we can get three or four people, you know, per town who are doing, that's a good start, and we can build from there. So, um, I, I just don't, I don't think it's, uh, the, the, the comment that, you know, we, we just, we just have the one, you know, we don't have a trapper. I, I don't think that that is going to be sufficient.
Mr. Jackson, I, I, I agree with you. I think you're absolutely right. I think it has to be a combination of things. I think the only other thing I would add to your comments is that we've got to figure out a way how to engage the municipalities, because the last caller was equally right, that not all towns, some towns have animal control offices, and animal control officers. And if we could figure out a way to bridge that resource at the municipal, local level with our resources, and then in combination with volunteers, we can certainly, uh, make a bigger debt, if, if we're able to bring all three. a bigger debt, if, if we're able to bring all three resources to bear on this, on this issue. But at least now we're starting somewhere. You know, a year or two years ago, we didn't have anything going in this regard. And like you said, I appreciate Ms. Gallow's passion, and I appreciate all that she and all the other volunteers do, but at least we're starting to address this, we're starting to make an investment in this area.
Agreed.
It was crazy. It was boring.
Um, Lionel, you're not muted. Um, all right, so Freeholder Mercado, do you have any other final comments, questions, concerns, or anything?
Uh, no, just, uh, just, just one comment. Uh, uh, again, um, I, I also appreciate Ms. Gallow's passion. Um, I think this is, uh, um, to, to address this effectively, it's gonna take, um, a collective approach, and we, uh, need to engage our volunteers, our community organizations, um, our municipal organizations that have the resources to bear, and it's gonna take some coordination, obviously, but I think we're on the right track. Um, and, uh, Administrator Jackson, you know, put it forth, you know, that we can, um, we have a plan, um, we can move forward with the plan, uh, the funding is there. If necessary, we need to, um, uh, continue it for twenty-one, um, that option is on the table, but we need to, uh, ex- expand the ones that we have, um, for to twenty-twenty. And then we have talked about some creative ways to use that money effectively, and I think it's a combination of a couple of things. So I think, um, we just need to move forward and keep working on it, it's a work in progress. So, um, I'm pleased to be a part of this group, and thank you for your leadership, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Freeholder Mercado. So before we, um, conclude our meeting, I want to recap, uh, to-dos and the next steps. So Ms. Byfus, you're going to give Administrator Jackson a proposal, um, centered around the training and trapping.
Right.
As a part of that, um, um, tell us how much a professional trapper would, you know, cost, so that we can evaluate all of the above. And Administrator Jackson will review it in concert with the Freeholder Board, will look at it.
Okay, I, I have no idea how much they would want. I would have to look into that. I really don't know how much a professional trapper would want.
That, that's fine.
Look into that.
Ms., uh, Ms. Gallow did, uh, I thought she recommended, uh, a person, um, I'm sure we can get the name of the person, but, um,
Amber, Amber.
Yeah, I think that's it, yeah, right.
Three names, yes. She did.
Yes. Cause we have worked with Amber.
So we can take a look at some of that, you know, that, that person to see if that's, and maybe this is the person who not only does some trapping, but also can spearhead a, you know, volunteer slash training initiative as well.
That's exactly what I was thinking, yes. So that, um, Ms. Byfus, you're gonna come back to us with a flyer that we can communicate out based around the activities that you're doing right now, the structured days that you have for people to come and bring, um, the cats down to your, your, your location at 124 Evergreen down in Newark. And then once
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, hopefully, you know, if this, you know, our situation changes with the, um, with the Covid, I mean, we will be going into the communities again. And, you know, if an area has a certain number of cats, we will take the mobile right there and do them to that area.
Well, that, that That was gonna be one of my asks that I would like for you to figure out if we could do. The, I've gotten calls over the last couple of months from seniors, and they were from, I believe they were from either Irvington or Orange, and their challenge was, is that they aren't mobile, they don't drive. So that would be my question to you. Is there a way that we could?
Yes, we could work with them. We could work with them, um, by transporting them here. Yes.
So, you know, uh, come up with a process for me and communicate that back to us, so that when we get those phone calls, we can give them some more comprehensive directions on what they need to do.
Okay.
And then, um, and then once we get the proposal, if we approve it and move forward, then you're gonna put together some kind of, um, communication, a flyer that we can put out to the public at large to talk about the training, or to talk about the professional trapper, you know, whatever our final, um, decision would be around that area.
Right, okay.
All right, so I think that's it, um, for us. If all hearts and minds are clear, I will entertain a motion for us to adjourn if no one else have any questions or final thoughts.
Madam Chair, just for the record, there's no one else in queue.
Oh, thank you so much, Lionel. I completely forgot to ask you that question before we end it. So, um, thank you guys all so much for joining us today. Mr. Jackson, you and your staff, the administration, the county exec, I really appreciate you guys for your support around this issue. Freeholder Mercado, thank you so much for joining us. To Deborah and her staff, you guys have been fantastic as usual. I thank you guys for all that you do. You've helped make this a very seamless process for me. So enjoy it, it's a funny day.
Madam Chair, I move to close.
All right. Bye-bye.